Hi, we're back. I'm just gonna document the time at 6:28. We may have had a technical difficulty. So for all those that are watching, we just had, we're doing reports right now. So, okay, David, do you want to just give a little report about today's?
Sure. The MSA, we started with over language in the contract and then the MSA proposal. We're in good progress right now, just getting language adjusted, and then we get a proposal to them. And so we're just going through that, trying to explain what was the purpose of this change. And so I think this is, uh, one, one, one. And we'll deal with the financial piece at, at the end.
Thank you. Any other committees? All right, 6.4 Superintendent Reports.
Yeah, so there's a few things on this. I think we have a visitor with us, Shelby, and I hope I say your last name. Is it McQuaid? Yep. Shelby McQuaid is here from Ayler, so I'm gonna talk about why she's here first. I'm gonna read a little deal here that we have later in our board meeting tonight, a resolution, and in what it's regards to. So I'm gonna just read this, and then questions. And Shelby's here because she's smarter than me, and she'll have the answers to your questions if you have any. Okay? So this is in regards to our extra, or the authority that was voted on by voters or by residents for this bond project, and then statute interpretation, I guess, was updated. And so there's some other funds available. So I'll just read this, and then again, if you have questions. Shelby's here. "In 2019, voters approved a bond issuance of $31,435,000. At the time, the district sold bonds, the deposit to the construction fund held an overriding limitation based on statutory guidelines, resulting in a bond issuance that was lower than the amount authorized by voters. Since that time, the law was modified to remove the reference to that limitation. Therefore, the district has an additional $1.3, or $1,385,000 of authority left from that voter-approved amount. The district will issue $1,385,000 of school-building bonds for the purposes described in the ballot and the resolution on the agenda, is the formal step the board takes to authorize the intent to issue bonds." So in other words, we have a little more authority that the taxpayers have already approved. Due to statutory interpretation, they left 1.3 million basically on the books. They're saying now the interpretation is that you can fully access that. So tonight in our resolution, we want to fully access that so we can take care of our building and roofs and things that we have a part of this project. So Shelby, is there anything?
Can I just go over the report? You should be working out, pan it out, and kind of hit the highlights.
Sure, we can. Yeah.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelby.
Is there any, any questions, or should I kind of hit some?
Why don't you go ahead and just hit some of the highlights, I suppose, here?
So, if you're interested, my name is Shelby McQuaid, and what the Aylers and where we're being schoolback advising, we were not the kind of the district issued the, um, had a bond issued in, in the election. So this was just remaining authority, like Shannon mentioned, there was sort of data and language and statute that limited to the property. So that was stricken. There was multiple interpretations from bond attorneys. And how that was then played out, so I thought of the legislature, but it's just like, let's clean it up. And I think that means for districts to go back and just access that additional authority that was granted, go up to that limit. So we pulled together a number for the sale, a pre-sale report where we anticipate that, that bond issue come in once we sell bonds next month. And as part of this, because you're selling a bond towards them, which is a federal holiday, state holiday, the marks aren't proven. So we pushed your bond sale back to the fifth. And then the resolution tonight will just authorize the board officer and the superintendent to sign, show that the bids come in within a certain range. So it just protects the school board from, you know, if interest, what it says is if the true interest cost is greater than 5%, officer off, not going to have it. If it's under that, correct, go ahead, sign it. And then on the Monday meeting, you'll ratify the sale. So it all happened already, happened. The board will just take that sort of extra step of saying, yep, well, good, here's our signatures. So I won't go through all these details. I know we have a full agenda. This is insane, but all the pieces are in there that really build the process to the bond sale. So we'll be working markets and changes in the pricing, and that'll be assigned to the, to the district in an underlying fashion, so that when the investors go to purchase their bond, they'll know how stellar it is. It's a R, and I'll just, I'll just, um, so probably just your books kind of from a third party. So really, you know, what I'll get to is just sort of the end, that last two pages, you show the schedule. So you'll issue the bonds, and you'll be spread over 16 minutes. You can pay the cost of issuing the bond to them. And you'll, I'm on page one, um, that's what it is. And the amount of the bond purchase margin funded approximately 135. So that'll give you everything that you need hopefully to finish up some of these projects for this. The level we talked about, by the way. The next is the schedule, which we work with markets. We're firming up a case to make sure this is like a lucky appropriately, and, and build out that appropriate time. The next schedule, and this is larger, it's just your overall, it's the thing that can hold here with this remaining authority to make sure that it was gonna fit in with the amount that we went to the voters, which, you know, initially that it's not gonna exceed a certain amount. And so that really fits in like a tutorial on the last page, where you can see from tax table 20 to tax table 20, that is the amount the voters proprise to go up. So they said yes to your project, and yes to that tax impact. And so those blue bars, now a couple of years later, are really where this remaining authority falls in. So if you kind of look from here to here, from 22 to 23, on an average, it's actually a reduction of the dollars when we're sort of bidding in here right now. You just like the blue bar itself, max now dollars here. So that was just making sure that we were, you know, continuing that communication to the voters that we're not gonna go above, or you told us was okay to make one, personally, to you. So yes, the official action is the resolution to issue the bonds, and then also to go ahead and warrant the sale is what we're doing tonight, if everything comes in below 5%. And currently, we're estimating through the money. So, that's it. Have you mentioned?
Do we know on the original tax implications for the voters? If it was based on the 31 million or the 30 million? Do you have the idea?
Yeah, it was based on the full authority. I mean, there, again, we didn't work with the district at the time. I had a hard question, that you were assuming it's something over the call and ask. What likely happened is that you received a premium on the bid, and so the underwriters pay more than face value within that sort of goes into the overall cost that was put, that the taxes were. And then you put the levy on, and you could see the first bar, according to the voters came in, and probably the result came in better, which is why it dropped a little bit in the atmosphere.
So just for clarification, because I feel like this would be a question that would be asked. Our taxes are going up, they're just not in the wrong thing where they may have done previously.
Exactly. And this is, duh, not your overall value. You're done.
Any other questions? Thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Shelby.
Okay.
All right. Well, I just wanted to make sure we did that first, so I kind of went a little out of order there on my report.
Well, did it stop again?
Okay, okay.
I need to say, okay, it's 6:38. Oh, so.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We changed the location, and that's our board meetings. Obviously, we're here tonight. There's a, there's 7th, 8th, and V-Squad, our ninth grade volleyball the night. We were curious how much noise is gonna be out here. Is it okay to be here still or not? This seems to be working fine, but we don't have concessions down running. And on the January 23rd and February 13th, there are varsity games here. So we need to find a different location, and so we'll get that out. I'm just trying to figure out where. Are we in this building? Are we in Dilworth? We'll have to talk about that. We could use the boardroom here like we did previously. It's not great for public, but it does work for the meeting for us. So anyway, we're trying to find another location. So just a heads up on that.
Doing all teams, we're doing all teams.
It's, oh, January, must be basketball. So I don't know if it's boys or girls or what. So I just know that we had conflicts with activities. So this is a great room, but it's also really close to the rest of the world. So anyway, just giving you a heads up that that'll be coming. First week, both Aileen and Wayne kind of talked about it and what was good, and it just was a great start. And I guess the reason is, and they both said it, is that all staff, no matter what job they have, they were all in it, and they were all a part of it, and they were all helping. And I'll just talk to elementary because they're the neediest. I think every interventionist had a role besides intervening. Well, I guess they were intervening. Some were serving food, some were managing the lunchroom, some were doing, I mean, it was all hands on deck, and I just couldn't be prouder of, of the people and the staff and all staff. So just super kudos to everybody. Our enrollment numbers are not perfect. They're 1540 is our number officially this first week of school. Down, well, it's not down from last year, it's up a little, but we were projecting a little bit better number than that. We'll see. We have till October to report, so we're hoping that that number can increase a little bit. But just wanted to make sure you knew that. Again, just all the activities that started day one, we had a home volleyball, excuse me, had a home volleyball game. And the new gym worked, and people were, enjoyed it. I get a lot of positive on it. So, yeah. So first week overall, again, as was stated, was fantastic. Just a reminder, I got this from my staff, that Pictures Day, which is the school board's favorite day, is Wednesday in Glendon. And now I left all my notes about this whole report in my other office here in Glendon as we came down from a previous meeting. But 7:45 in Glendon, and you know where they're gonna meet. So if these guys want to swing in before they go to work, Commons, I would assume that Commons too. If you want to.
I don't even take one, do I?
You really should, just for, you know, I don't know. You wouldn't have to, I guess. That'll be the board chair's decision.
He's off the hook.
All right, he's on the hook. But if you can't.
I haven't done mine in three years, so I can't see.
Well, if you like your old one, I guess you just avoid the picture. But next Tuesday, it's in Dilworth. So if you can't make it out to Glendon to take your picture, it'll be next Tuesday in Dilworth, and I know they've always done it in the cafeteria or the multipurpose room. So there you go. Wanted to give you that. Aylers, we already have the discussion. Thank you again, Shelby. Really appreciate your help through this process, and also bringing us up to speed to this authority so the board can act on this tonight. This is a big deal for us, and we really appreciate your help with that. Construction update. If you came through Glendon here tonight or on the backside, you'll see there's a fence up where the shop's gonna go. Been meeting with Nico, they're gonna get started, and they're starting to dig a manhole up, so that'll get going. And he said it's gonna go really quick here for a while because as they start to put the brick up, it'll go fast. So we're excited about that getting started. Dilworth, I would say MEA, it's gonna be a little after that, based on last week's meetings. But I would say it's November. If you look there, the parking lot, the curb got put in. They're gonna be pouring asphalt by the end of the week. So the parking lot should, by the middle of next week, maybe be accessible for our staff to park on. Can't enter that area right there yet, but they could, they can get out the street, they could park there and walk around from there. So that'll be very nice, and I think just the public to see that parking lot going in is a big deal. It has been for me. So.
For sure.
Other questions of me, or anything else that you have?
Are you, or any favor, maybe we don't get to that on these three different lead custodians, or how that's paid, or what that's about?
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that in a closed session. That's something that came up in our negotiations tonight, and we need to have further discussion with the full board.
Yep. All right, moving on to 7.1, regular meeting due to the motion to approve our August 22nd, '22 meeting. Motion by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Nicole. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, claims and accounts, Laura. Also included in this, the consent agenda is the treasurer's monthly budget report, also approving donations from Little Discoveries in the amount of $100 for DGF Elementary PBIS. Also approving a donation from Magnol Plumbing in the amount of $100 for DGF Elementary PBIS. Northland Dental in the amount of $100 for DGF Elementary PBIS. Per company, per company, company realtors in the amount of $25 for DGF Elementary PBIS. Donation from the High Hole in the amount of kidneys meals for DGF Elementary PBIS. Donation for Max Automotive in the amount of frisbees for the DGF Elementary PBIS. Donation from Spree Nutrition in the amount of 197 for DGF Schools PBIS. Clay Pony Public Health in the amount of 17-foot trailer for DGF Activities. And a donation from Dean Family Dentistry in the amount of $100 for DGF Elementary PBIS. Thank you to all those donations. Very, very nice. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Nicole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion or questions?
I did have three different questions. Your comments, if I can remember. Seems like we're spending a lot of money on repairs and scrubbers. It was $4,000 this time on three different bills, and it seemed like we had them before. I'm just curious what's going on.
Yeah, we replaced the one, if you remember, here, and the other ones have had, at the time, there was talk about we should get more than one because they're all dying at the same time. We're limping them along, and limping is probably the wrong word now. It's, it's time to, we're gonna have to make some decisions, for sure. But we did replace the one here last year, if you remember, we used some of that SIR funds. And it, we have some SIR3 funds available right now, so it's something that we could possibly do. Yeah, we.
Second one, there's one, something that was something when we were coming, stuff to think, have to think of. Like, K O with an R, real or something like that?
A rule. Yeah, that's lawyers. It was a lawyer, and I had the same question for Brooke. And now all my notes are down there. Oh, yes, that's, yeah, that's what it was. So we have a, we have an architect expert evaluate, weigh, and go plan. And so he's hired through our lawyer, so he submits his bills to them, and they get forward to us. It's the same thing. I said, I don't recognize his name either. And then it's one of the lawyers, that's what it was. It's, it's the architect expert speaks.
Last one, I'm assuming that Super Frog is all our signage?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So for all the classrooms, that should be done here. Well, he said three, three weeks ago, and I want to say that's probably a week and a half ago. So he, I talked to him, I guess now it's a week ago, and he said he's, you're working hard because it's gonna be for all these rooms. And so it's quite a, quite a job, and install, so.
So are the new door numbers in place now, or?
They are. If you look out here, that number 14, all these have been numbered except for like where the shop, those doors, obviously, so it skips, it goes to one, and then I think the next one is four because there's three that are. So he's put them in the right spots, so we don't have to move them, yeah, when we get this out.
13, that's gonna be right then.
Yep, yep, this number is right. Lucky number 13.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, any further questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Great, we're moving to 9.1. We're going to go into a closed session to discuss negotiation strategies. Do we have a motion? I got Nicole. David, you want a second? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, so we'll ask everybody in the room, if you can please step out. There's some lovely booths right behind here. Thank you.
There's a volleyball game. I know, I talked, yeah, but there's a volleyball game too, so, you know.
Just want to note to the recording for John, it is 7:24. We're coming back in. Do I have a motion to come back in from our closed session? Motion by Brittany. Is there a second? Second by Nicole. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so 9.2, I need to borrow your phone. We are going to do a declaration of Columbus Day. Um, sorry.
No, I'm sorry. It was earlier, right there.
Okay, so the school board intends to hold a regular meeting in October, on October 10th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. The school board notes that October 10th is Columbus Day. Although designated as a legal holiday, state law for its school districts, the option of determining that Columbus Day is not a legal holiday, such that public business can be conducted on that day. To the end, I would like to, would like a motion to declare Columbus Day as a non-legal holiday in the school district. Do I have a motion? Motion by Amy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. Sorry, I shouldn't do this. Actually, I do, it is a resolution, so we're gonna do a roll call vote. So Laura, David, Amy, myself, aye, Ronnie, Nicole, and Brittany. Beautiful. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Okay. Now we're gonna move on to 9.3, which will be policies. What did I miss?
Lane change on the other page.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you, team. 9.3, lane changes. Do we have a motion? Motion by Brittany. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. Any questions or discussion? The lane changes were in your packet and sent out via email. Go ahead.
The question I, just, when I was reading, are the salaries here, do they include benefits, or are they just?
I think those salaries are right off the scale.
Yeah, I just don't have a lot to talk about. They don't include that, just curious.
You said the bottom in the email, or I didn't see?
Yeah, it was on the bottom of the first email. I'm trying to find one for you, Ron.
I got, well, I got the copy here. I took one.
Yeah, it was in the bottom of the first agenda that was sent out by, that was last week. It was on the bottom of it. If you scroll all the way to the bottom, there was like 17. That's okay.
Here's yellow, Brooke.
Put them on the top, Brooke, for Ronnie, or send them separate. All right, do, we have a motion by Brittany, and a second by David. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now I'm on to 9.4. All right, policies. These are our second reading of the following policies. 208, development, adoption, and implementation of policies. 209, code of ethics. 210, conflict to interest school board members. 410, family and medical leave act policy. 415, mandated reporting of malt treatment of vulnerable adults. 416, drug and alcohol testing. 416, drug and alcohol testing form. 417, chemical use and abuse. 418, drug-free workplace, drug-free school. 515, protection and privacy of pupil records. 515, protection and privacy of pupil records form. 424, internet acceptable use policy. 603, curriculum development. 604, instructional curriculum. 708, transportation of non-public school students. 709, student transportation safety. 721, video surveillance other than on buses. 722, public data requests, and 722, public data request form. Do we have a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Nicole. Is there a second? Second by Brittany. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. This will be 9.5, fundraisers. We are gonna, I'm gonna ask for a motion to table this. As Superintendent Hunt said, I just came across his desk today, a few things that he has questions about and has not had time to do the proper investigation on it. Ronnie, motion by Ronnie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. All, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 9.6, extended day trip for the DGF High School volleyball team to East Hugh High School on October 15th, 14th and 15th. Do we have a motion? Motion by Amy. Is there a second? I got Laura over here. Sorry. Any questions or discussion? I'm assuming they're spending the night, obviously.
Yep, that's why.
Okay. Somewhere in the cities, I think.
Yep, it is, yes.
Eagan? So, yeah, well, I hope the girls have a good trip. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 9.7, certified contract for Jonathan Pope, DAP MA Step 7, effective the start of the 2022-23 school year. Do we have a motion?
So.
Motion by Nicole. Is there a second? Second by Brittany. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 9.8, non-certified contract for Caitlin Hushka, hair professional. Notice this is a .6 FTE, effective the start of the 22-23 school year. Do we have a motion? I got David. Laura, you want to be second? All right, any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, 9.9 is a contract for Carrie Abner, hair professional, effective September 13th, 2022. Do we have a motion? Motion by Amy. Is there a second? Second by David. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, 9.10. Or 10.0. Don't screw me up, Amy. Sorry. You gotta take these out. 9.10, I'm just gonna do them all right now. I'm just going. And I won't have any questions. All right. We are gonna, I'm gonna ask for a motion to table the confidential contract for Darren Larson, lead custodian. Do we have a motion?
A motion.
Do we have a second? Second by Laura. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Sorry. 9.11, I ask for a motion to table the confidential contract for Joanna Nabeti. Motion by David. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six to one. 9.12, I have asked for a table, a contract for Miriam Luna, lead custodian. Do we have a motion?
A motion.
Motion to table. Motion to table, thank you. Do we have a second? Second by Laura. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six to one. 9.13, this is a non-certified contract for Allison Dalinger, Dalinger, hair professional, effective September 14th. Do we have a motion? I got Nicole over here. David, you want a second? Thank you. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 9.4, this is a resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation to school building bonds, bonds, Series 2022, a establishment parameters. I'm gonna ask for a motion to suspend the reading of the resolution, as the school board had went over this with our Ayler's representative tonight. I have her name here.
Shelby McQuaid.
Shelby McQuaid. So I'll save your chops a little bit on that. David made a motion, and we have a second? Second by Nicole. All right.
On suspension or on motion?
Suspension.
Suspension of the reading of the resolution. And then now a motion made to authorize. Oh, I gotta vote on the first one. Thank you, Ronnie. This is, you can't leave me. Are you sure you're gonna leave me?
Thanks, but no.
Okay, so do I have to? Okay, so um do I have to do suspension, I don't have to do a roll call for that, do I?
No.
No, okay, that's under resolution, okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now I am asking for a, approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation, school building bonds, bond series twenty twenty-two A, establishing parameters, do we have a motion? Ronnie, a second?
Aye.
Brittany, I got Brittany over here, all right. All right, roll call vote here, uh Laura, David.
Yes.
Amy, myself, I, myself.
And I.
I raised my hand, hi, everybody. Ronnie, Nicole, Brittany, thank you. Okay, um next board meeting is Monday, September twenty-six, twenty twenty-two in the community room here in the Glendon site, followed by a personnel committee after that. Um just for the public watching, we still have positions um that we need filled. So if you are looking for a job opportunity and you'd like to work for our school district, please go onto our school's website, we would love to um at least have a conversation with you and see if it's something you'd be interested in. So it is seven thirty-five, um meeting is adjourned.
And so whatever, I'm going to use the TV for the committee a little bit.
Oh, we're going to, oh, this one, okay.